So now we can reconvene our regular board meeting. And I am going to announce that the board has approved the minutes of the one of one twelve twenty twenty one, three nine twenty twenty one and four six of twenty twenty one. In addition, we are, we voted to release all of the executive session minutes. So get my next page here. Of one twelve twenty one, three nine twenty one and four oh six twenty one. And the last action we took was to authorize the destruction of the existing records of the executive session that are more than eighteen months. Old, which includes the recordings of the executive session of twelve ten nineteen. All right, everybody feel I got them all?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a que- I have a question Nancy, just because what you said differed slightly from the annotated. The annotated only has the January twelfth twenty twenty one and the March ninth twenty twenty one for the release of the minutes.
Yes, we want to release all three of them, yes.
Awesome, okay.
They added that Katie.
Yeah, we did add that on, yeah. All right, so now if someone's being willing, we need in a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Right, roll call vote, Meredith, do you want to start?
I.
Roger?
I.
Cedric?
I.
I hear as well. Alright, so we have accepted the agenda as presented. Our next item is a public hearing. So I am now going to open a public hearing to receive public comments on the fiscal year twenty one twenty two combined budget and appropriation ordinance. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a statement during the public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty one twenty two combined budget and appropriation ordinance?
Nancy, there's no one reporting here at Kerr facility?
Okay. And I don't think there's anybody else either then, right? So you don't have any, there's no one who's joined the meeting too. Okay, very good. Well, I, since there have been no comments made, I will declare the hearing closed and we will move on to general public comment, which there probably isn't any of either.
None reporting at Kerr?
Okay. And nobody online. Alright, so I believe we are back to Elsie, who is going to introduce our newest intern.
Actually, we, we have Ashley here tonight.
With Ashley, oh, okay.
Yep, so Ashley's here and she's going to introduce our intern and Ashley is our outreach and wellness coordinator and also the the king of our Havana and getting it out in our community, so she's been doing a great job, but I'll let her introduce the intern.
Thanks Corky.
Yep.
Hi, everybody. As Corky said, I am the outreach and wellness coordinator here at the district. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for having me tonight to introduce our new outreach and wellness intern Tyler Jansik. So Tyler joined the district as our Havana unit supervisor this spring. And we look forward to him playing even more of a role on the UPD team this summer as the intern. But I'll give Tyler a minute to tell you a little bit more about himself. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley. Hi, everybody. My name is Tyler Jansik. I'm currently a senior at the U of I, majoring in community health and neuroscience. I'm also from the upper suburbs of Chicago, a little town called Will Matts. Um, so.
Go through that.
So, um, I, I truly fell in love with our districts ever since I was at the age of fifteen, where I received my first job as a junior counselor at the Will Matt Park District. Ever since, I always loved connecting with different patrons and just trying to improve their daily quality of life through just general recreational activities. And through working with Ashley and the entire outreach and wellness department, I've already learned so much and I'm truly looking forward to learning more at the Urbana Park District. Thanks.
Now, I'd like to add in that Tyler is doing a fantastic job. He's just a ball of energy, huge smile every time somebody talks to him and really appreciate him being here at the Urbana Park District.
Well, we'll, we'll welcome you aboard and I don't think we need to tell you that you're working with an absolutely fabulous team. So it's, I think, as far as internship goes, you've kind of got the best of the best here because this is, this is a, this is a good park district and the people who work here are better than great. So I hope you enjoy it as, as, as much as I expect you will. Okay, up deck appointments.
Thank you.
I can speak on that a little bit. The, the first thing is we did get two more applications for new up deck members, which I forwarded out to all of the board. So, you know, I've spoken to those of them, I go very excited. And, you know, obviously, we were hoping to get a few more people, so, you know, they're up for three-year terms. Happy to answer any questions about, about those two candidates. We also have an item. We have three candidates to appoint to vacancies on the committee, which we had discussed in up deck planning and I think at the prior board meeting as well. You know, approaching and asking current up deck members whose terms are expiring, if they'd be willing to stay on for one more year, for a short one-year term to fill those vacancies so that we have a minimum of fifteen members as specified in our bylaws. So all three, we have Howie Shine, Sarah Roper and Jean Haley to spend their, their terms. And all three were super excited about it. They really enjoyed being on up deck and I think all three have, have made really valuable contributions to the committee.
I appreciate that, that solution, Kelsey. One of the things though that I, I noticed and, and I, I wondered how difficult is it to get up deck representatives north of Main Street? Because on that map, there's no way.
No, I, I know. It's definitely on my mind and, and I think Don Up Deck's mind as well. And that's, we're, we're going to be aggressively recruiting north of Maine. We started doing a little bit of that this term, but I think we're going to try to figure out for something more sustained, so we have more sustained presence in those areas. But, but yeah, that's, it is, it is true. It's, we're woefully lacking with representation from, from those communities. So we're going to, we're about to fix that moving forward.
It's, it's been a hard, I think, I mean, what I was saying, it's been a hard year is just kind of silly. Everybody knows that. And I think that that's part of it. And I know that LaShonda worked that, the King Park neighborhood pretty hard, so it wasn't, I would say it wasn't for lack of trying. I think people are just working real hard to get their feet back on the ground. And I, I think that if we persist, we will, we will be able to get a wider dispersal rate of folks on, on our, on our committee because we certainly need that.
And I went door to door. I mean, everybody we talked to was very nice and receptive and that's the only area we canvassed. I mean, we were focusing entirely north of university, so.
I wasn't being critical in any way. It's just an, an observation. You know it as well as I do. I just felt that I, I wanted to make a public comment to that effect.
Yes.
We also, we also tried to push it at the vaccine clinic at King School. Now, we don't know how many of those were actually north of Main Street, but we did push it. So, you know, that was our, probably our first big attempt. I mean, I'm not sure when Katie and Kelsey went door to door, but we did have a big push to try and bring in some representatives from that area, but we'll keep trying.
We also didn't have our traditional summer events. I know at least, you know, neighborhood nights, we do have a up deck table. We do try to get some awareness, you know, talk to people when we can. So hopefully we can approve that situation too.
We'll just have to get different thinking hats on for different, different strategies. Alright, so we need a couple of motions. Anybody willing to step up?
I move to appoint Ashley Moore and Gary Stensland to serve three-year terms as part of the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four class for the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee.
Second.
Alright, we need a roll call vote. Cedric, you want to begin?
I.
Roger?
I.
Meredith?
I.
I hear as well. So that passes unanimously.
I am move, I moved to appoint Howard Jean, Sarah Roper and Jean Paley to one-year terms to fill vacant positions on the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, good. We need a roll call vote. Man, it feels like a carousel. Meredith?
I.
Roger?
I.
Cedric?
I.
I vote I as well. So that is a, passes unanimously. Up deck report, Laura included an up deck report in our, in our minutes. Does anybody have any questions? And comments? Alright, then our next action is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, our approval of the minutes of the June first twenty twenty one study session, approval of the minutes of the June eighth twenty twenty one annual and regular board meeting, monthly reports, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Now, anybody who wants, does anyone want to take anything off? It's the prerogative of any of the board members to remove something from the agenda to discuss during older new business. Okay, doesn't sound like it. So we need a motion.
I move.
Go ahead, Rod.
Okay. I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Alright, Cedric?
I.
Roger?
I.
Meredith?
I.
I vote I as well. So that passes unanimously. Alright, Katie, I think you are up next.
Alright, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, I've been doing audits. Today was the first day of audit field work at the cottage. So the three auditors showed up first thing in the morning and got settled down in the conference table at the, in the cottage and so I've been going strong. Everything's going well so far. So, so far, so good. And we're off to a good start.
Is the first day the hardest?
No, I, I mean, none of them are any harder. It, it always goes smoothly. So it's
Yeah, I know.
The buildup of all of it and it's
A little bit of tension.
Yeah, but it's, it's all good stuff, so. Also, I wanted to let the board know that I'm going to be gone next month. I will not be at the regular board meeting. So my plan is to present the July and August reports along, in the September board packet. So I've, I've done that once or twice before. So that works pretty well. I mean, all of the July and August reports will be included. I'll focus mainly on the August reports to just bring the board up to date. So now, for now though, I'm going to present to you the reports for the month of June twenty twenty one for the Urbana Park District. So the first report that I will be presenting is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior twelve-month period, the budget for the current period and the preliminary unaudited results for the two months ending June thirtieth twenty twenty one. The first page of this report is what we call sum one, and it's all of our funds except for the capital improvements fund. So it's a better look at just our operating budget. Revenues for this period were four million five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, which is an increase of about two point six million since May. Four million of our revenues are from property taxes and we've received fifty percent of our property tax distributions for the current year. You can also see with camps and programs up and running and with the pools open, that we've already earned more in two months than we earned for the entire year last year. So that's pretty impressive what the first couple of months of our fiscal year can do. And then I also did a comparison to, to twenty nineteen at this point in time. So as of June thirtieth twenty nineteen, which would have been our last normal year, we had three hundred and thirty-eight thousand in fees here. So a little, we were tracking a little bit less than twenty nineteen, but we're also a lot more than last year. So I think it's probably pretty right on for what we're expecting. Our budget is less this year than, we adjusted our budget downward in expectation that enrollment wouldn't be as high in some of our programs due to social distancing. When we were putting our budget together last winter and, and spring, staff was directed to use the phase four guidelines in all of their program budgets. So that included, you know, limited capacity numbers and things like that. So that's the good news. Not that the expenditures are bad news, but moving on a little further down on the report. Expenditures were one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is a change of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars since May. And we have a surplus after two months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of three million one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Where am I at? Okay, moving on to sum two, which is only the capital improvements budget. Revenues for this two-month period were one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And the negative interest that you see here, especially for those watching at home, this doesn't happen only but once a year. But when the fiscal year ends, there's a lot of audit entries that we have to do to close the books for the, the fiscal year and then open them for the next year. And one of those entries is called interest accruals. So there, we had a lot of CDs invested in the capital improvements fund because of our twenty nineteen A bonds. We have all of the, probably about half of the issue out in like a laddered CD structure. So any interest earned on those CDs still has to be recognized in the fiscal year that it was earned. But we won't actually get the money from that interest until the CDs mature. So we have to recognize it as, as revenue here in the prior fiscal year. And then we reverse it back out in May so that when the deposit actually comes in, this disappears and basically becomes zero for that amount. I know it's a little confusing. It's just one of those accounting things we have to do. So, but that's why you'll see that negative interest until those CDs mature. So I just want to make sure everybody was following that. Down below, expenditures in the capital improvements budget were forty-seven thousand dollars. And we have also, very surprisingly and unusually, have revenues exceeding expenditures in the capital improvements budget for this period of time with the ending net revenue of one hundred and one thousand dollars for the capital improvements budget, which you know, we're budgeting to have a decrease in fund balance of six million, six point eight million. So it'll get there. And not that we're going to get that far, but we have, you know, all of the bond money allocated for spending if needed, so. Alright, so lastly, sum three is the first two pages added together. And I always just point out, this is the ending fund balance of the entire district on the last day of June, which is eighteen million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So if the district were to end today, that's the amount of fund balance remaining at the park district. And following that are the individual summary reports for our main working funds, which are the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund and the indoor pool. And I don't mean to make you dizzy, but I will scroll on through. But happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the revenue and expenditure reports. Alright, hearing none, I'm going to move on to discussing the treasurer's report. So the treasurer's report lists the amount of cash that the district has on one day, June thirtieth twenty twenty one. All twenty-four of the district's funds are represented. And then they're broken out into which bank accounts that the funds are invested in. And the total, grand total for June of how much cash the district has on this one day is eighteen million one hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. The top of the second page of the treasurer's report lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of the eighteen million one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars on hand, fifteen million eight hundred and forty-one thousand is out in investments. And I know I talked about what poor investment returns we're getting and nothing's changed there. I haven't had any reinvestments, but you know, I'm not getting CDs. I can, I could put money in a savings account where we have full liquidity that's getting better interest than a CD where you're locking in the the principal and don't have access to it. So I'm not doing a lot of CD reinvestments right now. I just have things out in our money market accounts and our savings account and the Illinois funds. So hopefully that environment will improve over the next, I don't know, six to twelve months. The next section of, on page two lists interfund loans. There were no changes to interfund loans this period. And lastly, the third page of the report lists the dispersments for the month of June. And total dispersments of funds was nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, the largest being the bond payments that we made on the series twenty nineteen A bonds in June. So all of our usual bond payments have been made. And with that, I will present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Okay.
Alright, we need again a roll call vote. Meredith, do you want to again, please?
I.
Roger?
I.
Cedric?
I.
I.
Vote I as well. So the motion passes unanimously. And now capital budget. Derek and Andy.
Real quickly, I'm going to start and just go through the areas that there's been activity this period and then I'll turn it over to Andy and Derek for any other updates. So on the series twenty nineteen A bonds, there was activity in the rehab project as well as the one-way road system. And again, you're going to see a negative number here and this is a different type of accrual. It's actually an accounts payable. And so this is for any expenses that were incurred in the prior fiscal year but have not yet been paid. So we still have to recognize that those expenses were incurred, but we won't actually pay them until the future fiscal year. So whenever that bill gets paid, this will clear out to zero. So it's just, it's kind of the reverse of the revenue side with the interest earnings, but this is an expense side. And again, it's just to close out our fiscal year properly for audit. Let's see, okay. Moving on to the twenty twenty one capital budget. There was actually, I realized when I was preparing my script that I made a mistake and as, as all people do. There was actually thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars earned in this, in this total that should have gone up into this tributes and donations line. So this actually really still should just be this fourteen, seven hundred and eleven dollars and then the thirty-eight fifty should be in tributes and donations. And I've already corrected it, so you won't see that again. But this is the total for the entire capital budget for revenue is correct. And then the only expenditures that occurred was for stump, stump grinding that happened in this hazard tree line here. And in the twenty twenty budget, the, there were expenditures on construction crew projects. The, the second installment was paid for the purchase of molecular reflection was made to the artist. One of two trucks that was awarded in February was purchased. And in the contingency section at the bottom, expenditures were incurred on the fence cap for Blair Park and on tile repairs at Crystal Lake Pool. In the twenty nineteen capital budget, expenditures occurred in the prior fiscal year on the sailing project here. In the twenty eighteen budget, expenditures occurred in the prior year on Urbana Park District's share of capital improvements at the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center. And finally, in the twenty seventeen capital budget, expenditures occurred on Crystal Lake Park Rehab Project. And now Andy and Derek have some updates for you on capital projects.
Okay, I can start with a few quick updates on first being the Phillips Roofing Project. Our bid is advertised for distribute, for distribution beginning today. This will replace that existing asphalt shingles, which is covered by our insurance from hail damage claim that occurred last summer. We included an alternate for standing seam metal and some venting improvements. And those would need to be paid from UPD funds. Those weren't a part of that claim. As far as schedule, our bid opening is scheduled for August third and we're anticipating a board recommendation that month for construction this fall.
Andy, how much difference would you anticipate between asphalt and seamed metal?
I think the cost estimate had sixty thousand dollars more, sixty or seventy thousand dollars more. That's just our architectural estimate, but
Sure, sure. And so the base for the
With COVID steel pricing, I don't know how that's going to affect it from between when we had that estimate and now as well. So I'm going to be pretty interested to see how that plays out.
Yeah.
Andy, what's the difference in lives, in, in the lifetime of the roof?
I think asphalt shingles is usually around twenty to thirty years and standing seam metal I would assume is probably almost double that.
Okay.
It seems like, you know, the district's kind of been moving towards the, the standing seam metal where we can, but obviously budgets can play a big part in this decision and our insurance claim as well. Domestic hot water replacement, just a quick note that we are on, still on schedule for that week-long closure of the indoor pool beginning August second. Contractor's been on site last week to start reviewing their scope further with the site foreman. They're planning on coming back to get some additional measurements soon. I'm planning a pre-construction meeting next week with the engineer as well to review any other questions. I just want to make sure that everything's kind of ironed out the best we can, since we have such a tight window in that closure, not to get anything extended beyond that week. The saline habitat enhancement project, we had a visit from our project engineer and contractor this morning. Ted Gray, the engineer, was extremely pleased with how things have come along over the summer. I think his last visit was maybe in March. He was pretty impressed with the habitat improvements from the structures. Said they were actually exceeding his expectations. He was noted some significant signs of improvement and some water pooling and scouring as well as seeing some signs of sedimentation around the structures that also helps to improve habitat. We obviously don't have any data at this point on as far as collecting the number of species there, but I know that's something that IDNR was looking to see if they could do some sort of study upstream, maybe before the improvements and then downstream and with the rock structures themselves. So I'll reach out to them as well to see if they're still planning on doing those. Other than that, we'll plan on doing a final walkthrough. Our IGA expires at the end of this year. And so this fall, we'll try to get as many people from the project team back together to do one more walk at the site. Do you have some pictures like usual? I'll try to share my screen here real quick.
It sounds a real highlight of the report to have the photos. And thank you for doing that.
Hopefully I have some exciting ones this week. I think last month, we talked a little bit about the filamentous type algae that we were seeing covering the lake, which is different than normal years where we have the, the smaller little plants, the watermeal and duckweed. And I think at the last meeting, we were working to schedule the work for the manual removal of the algae. So here's some pictures first of the, the machine they used itself, which kind of looks like a tank. And then on the right, or my right, you can see the guy operating it. So he spent two whole days paddling around the lake and then gathering the algae and then depositing it on a couple of different locations. uh, locations we had set for him where, um, our staff actually worked, uh, with them to then, um, haul off the algae, uh, to our compost, uh, pile, at the Hickory Storage Site. And, you know, if you had been around the lake and probably the last month or more since we've had this done, it's actually been, uh, it's been looking great. And the filamentous algae, um, really, I don't see very much of it at all. Um, recently we are starting to see more of our, um, more common or recently common, um, watermeal and duckweed, uh, starting to show up, but, um, for the most part, I think the lake's been looking really great for, uh, past few weeks at least. And island, yeah, go ahead.
You suppose you have to have special certification to drive that?
Oh, to drive it? I don't believe so. I know for, for any sort of, uh, application that they're doing for like alum dosing and stuff, you do have to have a special certification. I don't believe you have to have it for this.
It's quite a piece of machinery, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not exactly what I was expecting. I don't know what I was expecting, but it wasn't really this.
Yeah.
But it, it works well. It's kind of slow going, but it got the job done.
All we need.
I think Katie might have spent an afternoon kayaking and pushing some algae as well.
It didn't work out. It did not work out.
Other jobs is assigned? Is that how that comes?
It was just an excuse to go boating for an hour.
Yeah, I think sounds like a great idea.
Our, uh, yeah, our landscape contractor has been really busy at the site since the last, uh, board meeting, uh, doing a lot of the plug plantings and the wetland shelves and the, uh, stone cobbled areas. And then here, I just wanted to show kind of more of the unique, uh, feature with the floating islands shortly after they had these installed. Um, and just as a reminder, these are kind of another, uh, tool in our, uh, tool belt to help improve water quality. Uh, where these plants will take up the nutrients and help clean our water, um, and, improve the water quality overall from the sediment basin before the water, uh, passes through the, the bridge into the main body of the lake.
Now, are there different plants on these various islands? Do we have to harvest them? How does this, how's this all work?
So there, it's pretty much specified with the same plug mix from our wetland, uh, areas. And, uh, these will be managed by the landscape contractor as part of the contract for the next three years. Uh, and then, um, it'll be kind of on us, just like the other, uh, natural areas to manage. After that.
Nancy, we, we previously met with a, uh, researcher at the university who's done a lot of work with nutrient management and agricultural water systems. And he was, uh, a, a big proponent of these as well. He said that once the plants established, they had, you know, these extensive root mats that enter the water below and help absorb all of the nutrients. So we're pretty excited to see how they work.
And how are these things anchored? Is it just like a big boat anchor or something or? Coffee cans full of concrete?
Yeah, they had, you're close. Yeah, with rebar tethered down to the bottom and weighted down.
You can tell I have a dicey fishing past. I think they look fabulous out there. I'm really glad to see them.
Yeah, I think once the plants establish, though, they're really gonna look nice.
Oh, yeah.
It's definitely a unique feature we've got going. Uh, so in Blair, uh, just a couple of images of some site work for the playground, uh, zone. Keith from our staff has had this area marked out, staked out for the equipment foundations as well. So, um, the contractor's portion of the playground area is getting close to completion, uh, once they get the under drainage, uh, set. Keith from our staff is doing the installation of the playground and the challenge course. And, uh, here's a couple of pictures from the ADA improvements to the T-ball field. Uh, this is at the corner of Florida and Vine, which I think turned out really nice.
Looks great.
And then a couple, uh, angles. So the contractor, you know, started on the, uh, would be the east side of the park and has been working, uh, clockwise. So this is now towards the southwest corner, um, Broadway in Florida, uh, the corner, here and where it starts to turn and head north, which is now, if you can see my cursor starting to move around the Little League Field. This is when they were getting their subgrade, uh, compacted and preparation for, um, my next pictures, which is the concrete, work, which was then completed. This is looking, um, would be east down Florida, uh, towards that T-ball field. And then here's that same corner that we had just saw, uh, after they had their concrete work completed. I think I took this last week. And then finally, just another kind of amenity that has been, uh, poured in the last week, which is the half-court basketball. So the contractor's still pouring and working on that path work around the perimeter, on the west side, um, but they are gonna start to make a move towards more of the interior features, that, uh, connection path that'll go, um, between, you know, will connect this basketball court, uh, the playground, uh, the accessible horseshoe pits, and then move in between those two tennis court sections where we'll have the challenge course. And so they should be pulling that playground equipment soon, uh, and then start the site work for that as well, so that Keith, uh, can get out there, uh, similarly and stake out, uh, where that equipment, uh, would be placed before they put their drain, uh, tile in. So we're anticipating all that equipment for the, uh, playground and challenge course then to be delivered here in the next, uh, two weeks. Uh, so that what we've, uh, requested, asked the contractors to have all that site work, uh, ready for Keith, uh, where he could start to begin his installation in August, and that would give him, uh, a few months where it's not in the dead of winter to get everything, uh, installed.
I don't know about other board members, but I've had more people getting hold of me wanting to know what is going on at Blair Park. I think it's, it's more than I've ever had in any other project, I think, that we've done. It's really quite interesting.
Nancy, mostly enthusiasm or concern or?
Well, no, no, they were, it was most, mostly curious. Yeah, they just wanted to know what was happening. Nobody was worried and nobody was unhappy. But yeah, a lot of interest. So, I mean, I think just because folks are out in their cars going by that maybe more often than they would are more peripheral parks.
Yeah, it's pretty high visibility.
I've, I've heard so many positive comments, particularly from my neighbors, because we're not that far. And, um, uh, some of them are, uh, well, one, one woman has a, a, a four-year-old in a, in a, uh, almost, uh, year and a half old. And she takes them, she has a little trailer on her bike. She takes them regularly up there to watch the construction from a distance.
Oh, I bet they love it.
Yeah, they really do.
Just wanted to mention, there was a terrific news gazette article. I hope folks are seeing that in the paper too. Fabulous spread on the work there, a lot of photos. Fortunately, they, Andy's name spelled wrong, but, um, we can.
That's not the first time that's happened.
Oh, it won't be the last either.
I've got two, two small updates that are capital related. One is that I previously reported to you all that the sanitary district is cooperating with MTV on a project to put solar out, uh, on the back half of our Hickory Street side that we leased in the sanitary district.
Yay!
Yeah, and that, that solar will fund, uh, fuel rather, um, uh, hydrogen, uh, compressed gas, uh, system that will fuel, uh, several MTV buses. Um, they're actually gonna have a, a piped connection go beneath University Avenue over to the, uh, main MTV bill, the building. So that's very exciting. And, uh, they started doing borings on that, uh, within the last week. The other bit of news isn't, isn't so good, but it's, it's not entirely awful. Um, and we, we'd begun having some discussions with Corky's staff about, our intention of developing, uh, a, uh, master plan for our athletic ball fields. And, uh, one of the areas that we were talking a lot about was lighting at ball fields and where we would need lighting in the future and where we wouldn't, uh, as we look to develop Weaver Park, lighting will be, uh, an important and sensitive topic. Um, and, and, uh, before we even began our study, uh, you know, Corky and his staff reported that the, the lighting at Prairie Ball Field, the hardball, would not be needed long-term. Um, about two weeks ago, uh, we had Remco go up with, uh, uh, a lift, a crane, uh, to replace some lights that were, were, uh, failing. And they came back with a, a somewhat, uh, cautionary report that, uh, a lot of the, the lights up there are in bad shape. Uh, the, the, the horizontal, uh, trusses that support the lights are, are beginning to loosen, uh, the hardware. And, uh, I think at this point, we're, we're looking at an expedited removal, uh, of those, of those lights. And we've already notified that the school district, they don't use them for, uh, Urbana High School Baseball. And there's, there's a handful of programs, I think, that, 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 that use them at all. Is that correct, Corky?
Yeah, it was mainly, uh, college U of I rentals for like, uh, club team.
Oh, okay. That's not so bad then.
We've also, um, been watching the utility bills for those lights. Every time we flip the switch, the, the, the demand charge, because they use so much energy from, uh, Amrit is just astonishing. And so, um, we, uh, if we were gonna keep, to keep them, we'd wanna put in LED, uh, something to do much more efficient. And, uh, the orientation placement would be entirely different than they are today. Uh, and so for that reason, early thoughts about trying to retain some of the wiring have been sort of forgotten. Uh, we're just gonna move forward with abandoning the, the wiring and, uh, then seek out a demo contractor to remove them. So, um, I, I think that there's a good chance, uh, by our next board meeting, uh, they'll be removed. Uh, if, if the pricing continues to stay above twenty-five thousand, because we got a preliminary quote from, from our electrician, uh, we would, we would bid it and bring it back to also prove at that board meeting, but, uh, I think there's a decent chance we'll be able to get done for, for less than that. That's all I got.
Oh, I guess I have to start paying attention. Right. I think then, Tim?
Yep.
Thank you guys for doing that. That's, it's always good to hear what's happening. Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Yep. Thank you. Um, starting out, just wanted to share some You Belong Here updates. The Matrix team, uh, sent along some accomplishments that I just read them. There are three, um, that relate to the strategic plan and their, uh, completion. Goal number three, objective B, expand staff involvement and number of locations. Urbana visits to provide onsite youth program registrations utilizing Carl's scholarship funds, uh, to nine annually. So that's a nice achievement. Glad about that. The next one is, um, strategic plan goal number four, objective A, increase program guide and free page distribution to community organizations and/or neighborhoods by at least four. We've done that. So we're very pleased about that. The net last one is strategic plan, plan goal number four, objective B, research and implement active net Spanish and French customer user interface module. So they completed that. We really appreciate that. That's the team that helps move those things along. Certainly the leadership team, uh, consults and helps, but it's really a staff effort. So we're really pleased with that. The other You Belong Here thing I wanted to mention that's coming up, uh, the really cool Bridging the Art Divide. That's gonna be the new artwork that's gonna be at Crystal Lake on the bridge. I was fortunate to be with the, the other staff that was on the, um, panel to select. There were just a ton of submissions, wide, wide variety of age. I'd consider that an age-friendly event. We had some very young kids, all the way up to some lot older adults. Um, and it was very difficult to make the recommendations of the ones that would go forward to be displayed. So again, I think everyone present, and there was probably a dozen of us, could see that's got a lot of legs. Um, we had some UPDAC folks, um, on that panel too, so it was really fun. And, you know, just seeing the creative work out in the community, creating outlets for, um, people interested in arts is really important. And there are very few canvases in the community where we can, um, express that. So, um, we're really excited about that, and I think there's a lot of growth potential in that. Moving along to my regular report, just wanted to start out with a few recognitions and thanks. Just wanna thank the Ground and Arbor team for the just amazing landscapes we have at all of our main facilities. If you haven't been out and about, I'd recommend you take a tour. I strongly recommend we consider starting our own garden walk at the park district where we would feature facility gardens, special gardens at Meadowbrook and select natural areas. I bet we would have a lot of folks interested. Um, so that may be something we could even trial, you know, ourselves, but, uh, we know this is a horticulture community. And, uh, I think we have a lot of potential to grow on that. Also wanted to thank the aquatic staff just for the great job they're doing at the aquatic facilities. I forwarded onto the board a compliment from a patron that noted, that noted a, a drill that was taking place and how professional it was done. Of course, we appreciate that and know what a good job they do, and we also know that that could change in a second. You know, the outcomes could be that, that close. So we appreciate the hard work of the aquatics group. Also wanted to thank Katie and the administrative team for the audit process. You know, it's an ongoing, year-long intense job. And then there's an intense couple of months of really pushing hard. Um, and thanks to Katie's oversight, um, she's not able to go to other meetings and she's very gracious about that. Once the work continue, and then we loop back to her and report. So she's definitely included. Um, but looking at all the awards we have received year after year, I think it's worth it and, uh, reflects their good work. Also wanted to thank Jackie Willis. She was our Boneyard Arts Festival Meadowbrook Park, um, featured sculptor, uh, June nineteenth at the Meadowbrook Interpretive Center. Uh, we had a wonderful Saturday, uh, sculpture exhibit there. She was slated to do it last year and COVID canceled this out, so she graciously returned. I'd recommended to staff that we offer, start our, offering a stipend, just a small thanks, um, to the artist. Most of the people are out of town and come a long way. And, um, while they might have the off-chance option of selling something, you know, it's just helping us out. I think they know us and they like what we do, and certainly they're, they're probably saying yes to the personal connections. So we appreciate Jackie's work and all the past sculptors that we've had and artists. Also wanted, lastly, recognize, uh, the Mark and the Park segments. If you're watching those, they're really wonderful. The last interview with, uh, Jacob Johnston was terrific on some of his work. I really appreciate the, um, kind of spot-on interviews that really give a focus on particular aspect of what the district's doing. And I, we hope people are tuning into that. A lot of great information and it's a lot of fun, and I think Mark does a really good job. Wanted to call out and recognize the effort for the forty-eight hours apiece that was going around the community. Uh, we had a couple of events at our parks and there's ongoing events throughout the summer. Um, so we just really hope that's a fruitful exercise. The reports I heard, there's a lot of attention and a lot of focus on that. So we're appreciative of that. Obviously, it's to, uh, try to make an impact and reduce the, uh, number of, of shootings and the gun violence in the community. So we'll continue to watch that and see how, how those reports over the rest of the summer go. Uh, let's see. Just wanted to report that the CC First Group, countywide, is starting to do our follow-ups with our legislators for all the asks. Obviously, the KRT is important to us. And, uh, we're working and had reached out to Senator Durbin's office again to see if they would be willing to anyway help negotiate with us with Norfolk Southern, on that small stretch next, just north of Weaver Park. Uh, so we'll hope, be hopeful, we'll get some attention and see positive things from that. Just wanted to mention that our KRT steering team meeting is in Urbana this Friday at Weaver Park onsite. Um, the idea is to kind of get familiar with that site, visualize the, uh, permanent trailhead facilities, check out the trail, and, uh, the Main Street connections, just to get familiar with how things will eventually come into Urbana. Also wanted to report that we're moving, trying to move ahead with the IGA, the inter, uh, intergovernmental agreement, between the Park District, the Forest Preserve and Conservation District as a start. Our hope is that others would later sign on. Did meet with Mary Ellen Waller and Jamie Pasquale. He's the executive director at Vermillion County Conservation District. I think he's moving more to a favorable position on that. I think it's important, because we really don't have any sort of, you know, document that ties us together. But more importantly, as we hopefully receive grants and funding, that may be a mechanism that, you know, helps us divide funds and share and, and work alike. So stay tuned on that. Also wanted to report, we have our second, uh, I'm calling it the new, 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 uh, effort on the Friends Group for the KRT. It's gonna be, um, coming up, uh, July twenty-second, next Thursday at Colb Park in St. Joe. So we're trying to move around the county to different sites to attract different people. We had about thirty-five people attend the first meeting and it sounded like more were interested. Obviously with summer, people coming and going, we may see ups and downs, but I think it's starting to gel now and we've really needed that. Uh, so we're excited about that. Staff continues, um, our staff steering committee continues to work on the DCO grant that will hopefully fund the rest of the build out of the KRT and specific facilities at Weaver Park. So we have a vested interest in that. So we have a vested interest in that. Just some updates on the health and wellness process. Last Thursday, Alex Fruen came to Urbana. He's with the CCS group. Had a wonderful working dinner, covered a lot of ground, I guess mapped out our, you know, final stages of the public campaign. There's a lot of moving parts and overlapping from the, you know, silent phase, the quiet phase to now. You know, I think in short, our steering committee is going to continue to reach out to anybody and everyone, you know, that we have a chance to. But probably some of the new targets are some of the businesses and get new assignments, and we'll be working on that. Our work is coming to a close. I believe August 13th is the end of our second extended contract with CCS. I think our staff goal was to get our development manager in place, get them at least warmed up, and get some other specific training set up for Jeremy with CCS. But, you know, at some point, we probably have to finish the campaign on our own. And so I think we're working on the transition. You know, what are all the things we need to get Jeremy set up with? What does the steering committee need to do? Obviously, close any deals, follow up with any gift agreements, make sure we're, you know, getting all those paperwork elements together. So I think that's challenging for staff because, you know, we've had the benefit of working with them, and anything we needed was a call or an email away. But again, we kind of need to move into the rest of the project using the good training and skills we had. At today's check-in meeting, you know, we talked a little more about that. And obviously, you know, we can outline things we still may need help with. But I think that's our general plan is to move forward and take the rest of the campaign ourself. And again, there's overlaps. You know, we'll probably be talking to people in the private phase, you know, later this fall. And I imagine in the winter, we'll be talking to more businesses. So but we did sort of arrange what I think we would call an ideal schedule. And that would look like maybe by December of 2021, reaching our goal, being able to draw a close to at least the major concerted effort of the campaign. If we could have a, you know, fall or late fall launch or some dedication event at the site, we think that would really be a way to bring all the people together, bring the neighborhood in, have a little celebration, and then look at bidding over the winter, and then perhaps a spring, you know, construction start. So obviously, it's contingent on fundraising. We're hoping that our own DCO grant comes through, and that would probably meet that timeline. So that's kind of the preferred plan. Obviously, if we don't hit those marks, the team's going to continue, and we'll stretch that out as short as we can, meaning we'd love to wrap things and be able to announce and get into construction. So we're very excited. And again, we're all committed to the full program. So, you know, cutting it short or, you know, building something less is not one of our goals. It might be a fallback, you know, if we were not able to reach our goals, but we're all confident we will. So we're looking forward to that. Let's see, moving on. Today, we had a discussion with the planning group about the, what I'm calling OSLAD two. There's been an announcement for another OSLAD grant. It is, the due dates start July 15th through September 1st. And so we're trying to figure out what a good request for that would be. I think original ideas were something with the outdoor elements at Health and Wellness. But we also followed up with an in-depth conversation about Prairie Play and how it's coming up. We're hoping there's another grant the next cycle that might tag that one. And then Kara was very direct. You know, she pointed out that we may not get another grant. We have a few outstanding grants, and depending on how the state staff looks at things, you know, is there an opportunity to spread things out further? So we have been fortunate, and we're in grants. But again, we like to think positive, and that are compelling projects linked to a great facility would score out and maybe bring us some additional funds. So we'll have to wait and see. And again, that isn't the final plan. That was just really the discussion today. So that could change with new information. Moving on Prairie Play, we had a Zoom meeting with Michelle Kelly from Upland Design, kind of outlined some next steps for Prairie Play. It is coming up very quickly. While we're excited and we know it's going to be an exciting thing for Urbana, I think the staff concern is, you know, we have several overlapping projects now that are pretty major. Crystal Lake, I would include Blair, although that's at least seems a little more finite. That'll complete, you know, it's not necessarily a, you know, five or 10-year endeavor. And then we have the Health and Wellness Facility. So how do we sort of maneuver another energetic project? We know the foundation can't be on constant fundraise mode. And so looking at who and how we could maybe raise some additional funds, I think we have at least tagged 200,000 as a target. But again, these are preliminary budgets. We haven't done any work with the community yet. But I think that was sort of the latter part of our discussion. Maybe later in this year, we could see forming a panel to get some, you know, preliminary discussions, get a procedure or a planning process outlined and a time schedule, and then start moving forward on that project. I guess, you know, some ideal opportunities would be getting a grant, going into construction. You know, if we could start that work in 2023, that would probably be a reasonable timeframe there. So stay tuned. Again, we have a lot of things going. We're going to keep UPDAC busy this year because they'll be front and center with all of our efforts. Also wanted to mention, you've probably read in the papers and been hearing about some of the American Rescue Plan strategies and funds that are going to different groups. As you know, special districts were excluded from any direct funding, and I'm not really sure why. But I think what we're being encouraged is to go ask the others that have received funding. So Kelsey and I worked on letters that went out last week to go to the city of Urbana, Champaign County, and the Urbana School District, which will all receive recovery funds. We identified projects that we could need help with, and we debated on putting price tags. We decided not to do that. We emphasized interest in meeting and discussing what their process would be and kind of sharing those projects. We did select heavy infrastructure projects and priority projects like Health and Wellness. So we'll see how those discussions go. Our understanding is the funding window is pretty, pretty long. Could go out as long as five years. We may not get funded next month, although I would like it next month. But we understand this is probably a longer game on that. So we'll see how that evolves. Certainly, if we had meetings and discussion, we might learn more of what their intent is. But we do know that many other community groups, not-for-profits, are sending in request letters for help. So we wanted to get ours in and at least hope for a bigger discussion. Let's see, two last items I wanted to mention, you know, Derek and I and the operations staff have been talking about, just some kind of negative things going in the parks. We're seeing large groups still assemble, leaving messes behind. We had some neighbor complaints over the weekend. So again, these are not rented parties or events. So it's really hard for us to, you know, know who and what and what's going on. You know, while we wish people would call the police to get some immediate attention if it's, you know, disturbing the peace. But we want to start messaging that. Staff's working with the Urbana Police. And I know Derek's talked a little with the Champaign Park District about an ambassador program they have. Derek, did you want to mention any of that?
Sure, yeah. They have a park ambassador program where they employ mostly retired officers, some active officers, to go out and usually the shift is 5:00 to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday evening. They'll also rotate some other evenings through the week. They've had some details at the pool as well. Historically, we've used our police fund in this manner. They, in Champaign, they're using it to hire these off-duty and retired officers. And it appears it's been relatively effective. You know, we talked with one of the officers that helps to coordinate it. I went out on the 4th of July and observed them working Hessel Park. And that probably wasn't a fair assessment because there was a lot going on in Hessel Park that day, and they couldn't be everywhere. But, you know, it's something we're looking into and evaluating more. It would be something that we could use our police fund for, and historically, we've only used a small portion of our police fund to hire officers at the pool and doing some additional park details. So something we want to consider. I will tell you that I saw just in the news today that a couple, and I need to verify this, but a couple of the portable toilets in Champaign Parks were lit on fire. And so I see Laura's nodding her head. It happened. So, you know, you just can't be everywhere. But, you know, the intention of the ambassador program is to have some additional eyes in the park when our staff can't be there. They're hopefully, you know, really truly acting as ambassadors and going up and helping people understand, you know, the rules and why the rules are there, and make sure the park is safe for the use and enjoyment of everybody. And so that would be our intent if we bring this program forward. We're getting at more about it now.
Are these scattered incidents in parks or are they concentrated in just a couple of parks? I mean, for us?
For us, it tends to be large gatherings in a handful of parks. The Crystal Lake Park has always been a popular destination for large groups, and it continues to be so. Ambus Park is being enjoyed by a lot of folks. And it started last year with COVID. You know, it was safer to have gatherings of family birthday parties, these large groups outside, and Ambus Park became a popular destination. It's continued through today. And so, you know, I would say that a lot of times, the groups do a great job of cleaning up after themselves. But there are a handful of groups that continue on after dark when they really shouldn't be there. The parks close after dark, and sometimes I think that there's, you know, some level of intoxication taking place that that brings a good job of cleaning up afterwards.
Okay.
So we're not the only groups. They're, you know, Derek mentioned Champaign. But over the summer, we've talked to Decatur Park District, Springfield Park District, Savoy, Champaign County Forest Preserve, and Vermillion County also Conservation District. So it's probably a result of COVID, I'd like to think. We really want to know why because we think if we knew why, we could come up with some alternatives. But we're going to continue to track it. I think this ambassador program might be a good way forward, and we'll see how things progress. Lastly, I wanted to invite Corky to do an update on the outdoor pool and any news yet on that.
Yeah, I was talking a little bit in the beginning, but I've got a, you know, based on our numbers this year, we're down a little bit from 2019 right now. But that's to be expected. We're not taking day camps, our day camps. We're not going over to the pool because we're not doing transportation. And, you know, the weather's not been great for the last week and a half. Before that, we were kind of right there even with the 2019 numbers. But right now, we're about 7,000 visits behind 2019. But again, that could change between now and next month, just based on when the bad weather comes and those kinds of things. So I think we, overall, we've been happy with the attendance on those good pool days. We're still getting some camps from, you know, other facilities, other districts, other daycares. Staffing is going very well so far. Again, like I said, probably last month or the month before, we're, you know, we're pretty short-staffed. But the staff that we have are doing fabulous work. They just really received elite status from Starguard, our governing body for lifeguards. So we've got a good, good crew. Again, we've got another class of lifeguards coming in here in the next week or two. So we'll hopefully gain a few more staff. We always lose some staff in August, so we're a little concerned about August. But Leslie and her team has done a fantastic job managing what we do have. And also kudos to them. They put in a lot of time guarding and managing at the facility as well, based on the fact that we're short staff. But all in all, the Nadiators has around 170 kids. That was reduced on purpose, just to availability of times for practices. In the past, we've used outdoor and indoor. Well, we're not doing public stuff necessarily at the indoor yet. That'll kick in in the fall, once the outdoor closes. A typical season for Nadiators is around 220, 230. So a little bit smaller numbers, just like all of our other programs. But all in all, we've been pretty happy with how things are going.
Corky, do you think most of those kids are from Urbana?
I would say 75% of them are from Urbana.
That's good.
So we've also got our year-round program that's working a little bit. Our numbers are probably around 25 to 30, which is not unusual for summertime. We, Michelle Zimmerman, who's coaching, I believe she's an assistant coach for outdoor season. But she's kind of taken a lead on our year-round program while we're in search of a replacement for Ed, who retired.
Thanks, Corky. Good information. Nancy, that's all I had. I can answer any questions.
All right. Well, I don't hear any snores from France, so I think the president is probably okay last night. Texted and emailed with them. They're fine and having a nice time.
Great.
Okay, liaison reports. Roger?
We, the finance study group has not met since, since the last board meeting.
All right. Policy study.
The policy study group met in April, and we are working on future meeting dates.
Adok. Roger, you're up again at the foundation.
Yeah, we, we had to cancel our meeting yesterday because we had a lot of people missing. So we have not met since, since before our last board meeting.
Cedric, do you want to tell them what we haven't been doing? About with the planning and the UPDAC?
Yeah, I guess that we last met on June 8th to discuss bylaws and topics for the first half of 2022 and recruitment and appointments. And then, of course, we went through those recruitment and appointments.
Right, right.
And then we, I don't think we have a planned next meeting yet.
Yeah, no, I think we're, I think we're good for a while. Is that, wasn't that our decision? Or, yeah, things are rolling and we've got it in hand for the next bit. All right, old business. We got a budget book.
Okay, that's me.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I have the budget book pulled up, and I just wanted to walk you all through just a few highlights of some pages that I wanted to draw your attention to. So the, everybody have their book handy?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to. I'll have it on the screen. But the first thing I wanted to show you was something I did a little bit new this year. I thought Meredith might like it. Our leadership team has had a couple of meetings where we're talking about reviewing our mission and vision and values. And a suggestion that came from that team was to try to change our values into a Word Cloud. So I did that. So I plugged our, there used to be just a page of black and white text here in all of the previous versions. So I basically just copied and pasted that text into a Word Cloud generator. And this is what came out. So I thought that was pretty cool.
It is cool.
It is very cool. Thank you, Katie.
Pages five through 21, and I don't mean PDF page. I mean, the page that's printed, the page number that's printed on the document, are the annual, is the annual goals document. So these are final goals, where you can see that, you know, every single one of our strategic plan goals has sub-goals underneath it for this fiscal year. And we recently went over the district-wide ones, but all of the departmental goals are represented here. And I wanted to give a big shout out to Kelsey, who compiles all of these goals into one consistent document and formats that all- uh, consistent document and formats that all for this um, budget book. And she does a really fantastic job.
Yeah, it looks great.
Uh, I'm gonna make you all dizzy here. Let me just stop sharing because I gotta get down a little further here. The next page that um, pages twenty-seven to thirty-two are various um, tax information of the park district. So let me see, I got this pulled up now. So it talks about what our tax rate is and how it's changed over the last ten years. That's what this page shows. This page is an estimate of how much your tax bill would be for various different prices of homes. So if your home is valued at ninety thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-one tax year, your total tax bill uh, will be around thirty-two hundred dollars and the portion that is paid to Urbana Park District from your bills, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then it goes up from there for different home prices, just to give people an idea of how much of your tax bill goes to the park district. And you could see it's about ten percent of the bill, just over ten percent. Um, it's a great value. This page um, shows the different tax rates that are available to park districts to be able to be levied. And then it discusses if the park, if Urbana Park District levies those or not, and at what amounts. And then um, uh, this page shows, sorry, more like this page. This one shows total tax rates for all people that live um, within the city of Urbana. So um, this is the two thousand twenty-one tax rates and then the part, sorry, this is Urbana Park District's tax rate broken out by all the different funds that we levy. So um, the total tax rate is like ten point um, five or something, and then ours is one point two of that. And so here's all the different funds and how much we levy by each fund. And then we're expecting to levy seven point seven million dollars this year in tax revenue. Finally, um, this page shows about over a thirty-year history of how the assessed values have increased in um, in the Urbana Park District. So that's kind of interesting. And there was a few years where it actually decreased as well. So um, but it's, it's been slowly increasing the last five or six years here. Following that are um, where we start getting into charts and graphs. So the tables on pages thirty-four and thirty-six give you a comparison of the prior year's budget and the current year's budget. So here's the prior year, here's the current year. Um, and then the uh, second graph just shows the operating budget, which then takes all that capital out, which is kind of a better look at our day-to-day operations. And you can see our park districts funded on the revenue side about seventy-seven percent by property taxes. Where, with the ne- next largest category of revenues coming in for fees and facility rentals at just under ten percent. And then on the expenditure side, uh, just like most organizations, the largest expense for the park district is for full-time staff salaries, which is at about twenty-five percent. And that's followed then by debt payments of eighteen percent, almost nineteen percent. This last chart or table on um, page thirty-eight is the actual budget and appropriation ordinance. The main difference from this uh, this particular table compared to the first table that was shown on page thirty-four is that the budget and appropriation ordinance is a legal document that we have to file with the county. It's actually um, our legal appropriations. We're not allowed to go over the spending authority of this document. And so some of the categories of expenditures have been um, increased so that to offset if other additional revenue sources become available. So it's slightly higher than what our actual operating budget is. So the whole rest of the document shows our actual budget numbers, but this particular uh, piece of information is slightly larger um, for the expenditure side of things. And that allows the park district to have the appropriate, the appropriated authority to spend if more revenue is received without having to go back and do supplemental appropriations and things like that. Um, following that, just um, just a couple more highlights here. Page thirty-nine, this one, even though it looks like so, a slightly different format, this is what we normally would call sum three. So this is all funds district-wide. This is the total sum summary picture of the park district and it, it matches the table on page thirty-four. Um, and then pages forty-one and, sorry, pages forty and forty-one, this is sum one, and then page forty-one is sum two, which is just the capital budget. And then after that is just all the individual funds broken out by departments. So you can get an idea of all of that detailed level of spending. Um, but most of the bulk of what I want to draw the board's attention to is towards the first half of the book, so. Anybody have any questions about that?
Slick.
Very good. Nice job, Katie.
Thanks. It all comes together.
Um, okay, so I guess next is action on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero six combined budget and appropriation ordinance. Um, by state law, the annual combined budget and appropriation ordinance must be approved and passed before the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year. This action appropriates the monies that are necessary to cover the projected expenses and liabilities the district may incur during the fiscal year. Right, so we need a motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six combined budget and appropriation.
Second.
All right, let's have another roll call. Cedric, would you like to begin, please?
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so that's an approved unanimously. Um, we did not remove any old business from the consent agenda, so we could just trot right ahead to new business. Um, this is a sales agreement with the city of Urbana for nine oh nine and nine eleven North Lincoln. Um, do you want to talk about this or should we just go right straight into it? What's?
We, we can. I think I provided some background, Nancy, in my report. And so whatever the president would like, or the vice president would like to do, but basically it's cleanup work, transferring the last bits into the right hands. That's the short of it.
Anybody have, anybody have any questions and comments, anything other than another motion?
Well, I think the price is right.
Exactly.
It is. It's a nice move. It's, it's a, it's, it's, it's lovely to be able to work well with the city and to have this nice give and take and um, w- working together as opposed to being poles apart and just struggling with what the city's doing or they're struggling with what we're doing. So and I know that doesn't come without effort. So I want to congratulate you on keeping another ball in the air. I was thinking before how much, when I was listening to Tim with all the things that everybody's doing, it's, I mean, it's like juggling a whole barrel of ping pong balls. I don't know, I don't know how you all do it.
Great team.
Yeah, and you're all really good jugglers. All right, so then I guess we need another motion. Anybody willing to give us a hand?
And move to approve the sales agreements with the city of Urbana for nine oh nine and nine eleven North Lincoln Avenue, Urbana.
All right, we have our motion seconded. Uh, Meredith, would you like to start our roll call, please?
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Cedric.
Aye.
I vote aye in as well, so that again passes unanimously. All right, our next item under new business is the um, action to award the UpDeck outdoor learning pavilion design. Um, Tim, do you want to talk about this? Is there anything you want to tell us? What, uh, where should we go from here?
Sure, I think Andy's uh, probably going to cover the actual uh,
Yeah. Okay.
I can start with a, a little bit of background and share some project information. Uh, this is for our museum uh, grant, which was a, a planning process. Uh, we started um, for an application in early two thousand and twenty with Ratio Architects. Um, at that time to help us with uh, cost estimation and uh, renderings for our overall uh, program uh, that was included within that, that application. The um, project provides for a new uh, multi-season uh, pavilion for environmental education, uh, rentals, and what will be the new um, outdoor summer camp headquarters for nature day camp, which would uh, be replacing uh, the use at North Woods Pavilion. And uh, as part of the application, we had uh, received letters of support from uh, community members. Uh, we reviewed and received support from UpDeck all before um, submitting that final application and uh, I think it was last fall. And we were uh, notice, provided a notice of award later that year, um, which was for an eight hundred and eight thousand dollar project with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from museum uh, grant funds. So tonight we have the proposal from Ratio uh, for design services that would take us through construction. Uh, and that's in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars. And we are um, also recommending to include a ten percent contingency, uh, which would be nine thousand six hundred dollars. Um, as far as schedule, um, pending the board uh, action tonight, we'll look to uh, continue into schematic design phase this fall. Our plan is to then bid it uh, this winter. Uh, potentially have it under construction uh, spring next year in two thousand twenty-two, um, potentially being ready for some summer camp season next year. I do have some pictures to share as well. These are some renderings I think I've shared with uh, the board and UpDeck uh, previously. Um, but for a reminder and uh, to show anyone watching from home, just what this project entails. See. So here we're looking at that uh, northern portion of Crystal Lake Park with the nature center uh, up top and the uh, outdoor pool here towards the south. Our primary project area is located uh, o- over here towards the eastern portion. Um, and the project will include a new parking lot, twenty-six spaces, uh, solar lighting, uh, rain garden, and then accessible pathways that would then connect to the learning pavilion, which uh, was a main uh, part of the grant. And then connections from that pavilion uh, to the nature playscape and to the nature center. So here's a couple of those renderings that were included within the application itself. Uh, you can see that the pavilion um, is kind of chosen aesthetically to blend into the surrounding facilities uh, in the area with the standing uh, seam metal roof, um, stone and block look. And then what's in the rendering here to my right also shows um, kind of like outdoor heavy-duty curtains, canvas-type dropdown, uh, so that we can have the ability to program this space uh, in multiple seasons rather than just being stuck to um, when the temperatures are overly uh, pleasant. Um, and that's really falls in line with some of our strategic plan goals uh, as well, which is to provide um, multi-season uh, educational opportunities um, and environmental education specifically.
So these, the, the curtain things actually drop down from the support beams? Is that how it goes?
Yeah, we, they uh, they kind of roll, you can kind of see them here. They're rolled up.
Right. Oh, that's really nifty. Great, okay. Thanks.
Uh, and then kind of getting more into the, the size of the pavilion. I think this image here on the left just kind of shows you how much space we have. There's eight picnic tables that are fitting underneath the overhang at this portion and then kind of zooming into the block structure itself. Uh, the large storage room. Um, again, one of the main purposes for this facility is, is to replace the use of North Woods Pavilion for day camp. Uh, that pavilion does have a large um, support uh, building uh, with the structure itself that includes a storage room. And then a gender-neutral uh, restroom, um, water fountains. And then we have a fireplace that will have uh, staff be able to secure when not uh, needed for program usage. But again, that kind of goes into having a programming extending into different times of the year and times of the day as well.
Andy, will that re- restroom be, be usable year-round?
I think it'd be like our, the rest of our restrooms where we'd shut them down. Um, I think it's in October, late October.
Okay. And how does this compare in size, say, to the um, pavilion up by the, by the barn at Meadowbrook? Just to give us a ballpark, it's bigger, right?
I think Prairie Play Pavilion has, I could be wrong, six picnic tables.
Six, okay.
I'm trying to remember. I feel like it has six, so it's a little bit uh, expanded footprint here.
Okay, good.
And then uh, finally, just kind of a different angle looking uh, from a different perspective on the other side, just to kind of show um, trying to get the architecturally um, pleasing aesthetic uh, in the park as well. So I'm happy to answer, answer any other questions if you have any.
I'll just mention that um, Tim and I uh, had a conversation with one of the immediate neighbors uh, to this area in Crystal Lake Park who um, had some concern about what was, you know, proposed. Uh, you know, we, we did have a previous open house where we had some good attendance from neighbors. And um, one of the things that we talked with that neighbor about was making sure that there's an opportunity for public input, you know, as this process moves forward. And we've talked with Ratio about that and we're even envisioning maybe some um, smaller stakeholder meetings for the immediate neighbors that live in the vicinity of the facility. Um, obviously, it's going to be, you know, a, a change, but it's one that's really needed. Uh, we um, we, the existing day camp pavilion has, has a lot of shortcomings and um, there's a, a need to provide something closer to the nature center. Uh, this will be safer for the, the camp kids, you know, in the event of a, a storm. Um, and this will also address some of the parking issues that we have and drop off issues with, with day camp as it, as it exists today. So we're, we continue to have those conversations with the neighbor and we're, we're committed to, to working on a outcome that uh, serves all of Urbana, but also recognizes we have some, some, some neighbors that, that we want to work with as well.
But were there, their, their main concerns?
I, I think it's just change. Uh, they, they, they really like the, the very quiet, kind of serene uh, area uh, uh, adjacent to the nature center. Um, they, they had some concerns when we built the pool and we worked with them on, on those concerns at the time. So it's uh, you know, everybody has sort of a different perspective on, on, on the best use of, sorry, my Siri woke up. Um, I, 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 you know, uh, a, a best use that, that, that area and we need to balance, you know, all the different needs for, for, for Urbana all of our neighbors. I'm optimistic we can do it.
Yes, I agree.
It's probably another comment too, you know, just a difference between a park like, say, may- maybe Meadowbrook that doesn't have a lot of neighborhood right around it compared to one that does. And long-term, you know, over a hundred years, people remember when, you know, the park was a lot quieter and, you know, it was more of a daytime option. We're really kind of changing our park district overall to meet the needs of our community. And so with that comes change. And as Derek outlined, you know, that change, depending on how close you live to it, probably looks different than, you know, where I live. Um, and so we're just trying to give people an opportunity, you know, to be heard and listened. If there's anything we can do to, you know, incorporate um, things that would hopefully make it better, we would do what we could. But they would also have to understand that, you know, there are probably are changing needs in an urban park district. Crystal Lake is probably going to be a, one of those places, you know, that would undergo a lot of change to meet today's park district needs. So we hope we can strike a balance and, you know, keep, keep the wheels on the track, but try to do what we can do to soften or um, deal with any of those concerns.
I think listening is probably the biggest thing and you guys do that really well already, so. All right, one last motion.
I move to award design services for the UpDeck outdoor learning pavilion project for ninety-six thousand dollars and a design contingency for nine thousand six hundred dollars to Ratio Architects in Indianapolis, Indiana.
Sorry.
Aye.
All right, last roll call vote of the evening. Meredith.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Cedric.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. There we are, another unanimous vote. We have no more action on new business. There we are, another unanimous vote. We have no more action on new business. We have no action on new business removed from the consent agenda. Any comments from anybody before we're closing up shop tonight? Going? Going? Gone? All right. During the meeting, we'll see everybody at the beginning of August for study session.